20, it is 6:32 PM. And this is the National Board of Education Special Board of Education Meeting. As President of the National Board of Education, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we previously gave notice to the public of this meeting at www.nashua.edu and at the City Hall and Hunt Memorial Library. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Okay, so Mr. Guarino is not here, and I don't know the order off the top of my head. So I apologize to everyone if I get it wrong. I'm just going to go across my screen. So I'm here, and as everyone can hear, my son is in the kitchen, which is attached to this room, making himself some dinner. So Ms. Brown?
I am here. I'm in the room by myself, and I am wearing earbuds, so no one else can hear me. Thank you.
Ms. Timmons?
I'm here. I'm in the room by myself.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop?
I'm here. I'm currently in the room by myself, but kids are over watching TV, so they'll ignore me for a couple more hours.
Okay. Let's see. Ms. Gilio?
I'm here. I'm in the room all alone.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
I'm here. I'm at my son's house, and right now, there's nobody else on the deck other than me.
Okay, that sounds like a lovely place to do the meeting.
It is. Peaceful.
Okay. Ms. Odin?
I'm here. My husband walks through occasionally, but I have earbuds, and nobody can hear but me.
Okay. We also have Dr. McKinney, Dr. Mosley, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Parker, and our student member, Mr. Norris. I understand that Mr. Guarino will be coming late. Mr. Gao is running late due to an athletic event this afternoon. And Ms. Seem is not going to be here with us this evening. Okay. I don't like doing race jobs. All right, moving along. So this evening, we have a number of items on the agenda, but my hope is that they won't take too terribly long. Items number 1 through 5 on our agenda regarding student numbers, staffing numbers, the remote versus hybrid information, as far as like moving between the levels, the reopening of the district office are all items that board members had questions for administration, and they have provided the answers to those things in our packets. So I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about it if it's stuff that's in our packets. I also spoke to Dr. Mosley today, and he informs me that he will have a presentation for us on Wednesday of next week with a lot more details, as some of the numbers have changed even since we got them on Friday. Is that correct, Dr. Mosley?
Correct. I'll be giving an update on the staff update by numbers, some updates on the student selection of the remote versus hybrid. And there's one other thing. Oh, yes, by next week's packet, board packet, we'll have a revision of 2.0 of the Remote Learning Handbook.
Okay. All right, so if there's no objections, I don't really want to get deep into the weeds on these topics, and instead would suggest that we table them, table items 1, 2, 3, and 5 for the next meeting. I see Ms. Gilio shaking her head. That's a yes. Ms. Johnson has her hand up.
I was going to make the same suggestion. If we're going to get an update, and this could be just integrated into next week, so that's my feeling.
Okay, great.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Timmons.
I don't have a problem with tabling that those 3 items you just said, as long as it doesn't interfere with what they have to do now.
Okay. Dr. Mosley?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Quite great. For item number 4 on our agenda was the question of reopening district office, and I spoke to Dr. Mosley today. District Office is open. And there, I went to District Office, and I saw on the door that there are a number of numbers you can call if you get there without an appointment, but the best thing to do is to call and make an appointment, and then someone will see you. But it is open. There are staff in the building. Dr. Mosley, was there anything else that you wanted the public to know about Central Office?
I think you touched on it today, Heather, a little bit. We're following kind of the hybrid schedule where we have half of our people there, the other half are not there, and we do that by design. District Office is not that large in a sense that we do have employees that share office space, and it's very close quarters. So we do have to start to, we created a schedule where it puts half of our employees in the building, the other half working remotely. There also was a question about PPE material as well, and as I shared with Ms. Raymond today, that our top priority isn't District Office at this point. Our top priority is to make sure we start with our schools first, making sure that they're outfitted first, and then District Office will follow.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. That seems wise. Ms. Timmons?
I do have one question regarding opening the public, I mean, opening the District Office. Does the public have a right to go, does the public can go in and out whenever they want to? Or is certain hours they can go in if they so choose? How's that set up?
Okay, so District Office is open. I think Dan's on the, I mean, we typically open at 7:30. I'm sorry, we're open at 7:30, and we typically close around 4:30 or 5:00. So that's our typical operational hours. Our summer hours, do we have a difference in hours in the summer, Dan? Is it the same? I'm not, I...
It's the same.
Okay, so it's 7:30 to 4:30 that we're open.
So the public can go in and out?
No.
Well, that's the question.
Yeah, the answer is it's open to employees. All employees can come and go. It's open by appointment only up until October 5th. At that point, we'll make possibly a different decision based on school, but at this point, it's appointment only.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you. Just to be clear, the entirety of District Office, while it's a public building, it's also a place of business. The public, under normal circumstances, can't wander about the building. There's like a public waiting room, and then the parts where the business of the district is done that might have confidential information.
Yeah.
Right? So I just want to be clear on that, just like with our schools. You can't, they're public buildings, but people can't just show up and wander about. It's not safe.
No, I wasn't talking about wondering about just showing up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so today, when I was there, there were numbers to call on the door, like if you did happen to show up, you could call a number and get somebody, but that didn't mean that that person would be able to meet with you right that minute. So, any other questions or comments on the first 5 items?
Ms. Raymond, I have one on the hybrid and remote percentage choice by school. Can we get, along with the information, I think this is a great spreadsheet, but can we get what the last enrollment number was as of March 13th for each school? So we can see how many people did not respond or have not responded?
I'm not sure. March 13th was last year.
Well, when we, when we closed, March 13th, when we went into remote learning, okay. How many students were enrolled in each school? I'm looking at Amherst Street because I'm familiar with it, and I know the number hovers around 300 at Amherst Street, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little, little less than that. And I see the number 253, and I'm just wondering if there are people who have not responded to this so that we have a more accurate number of the unenrolled and all of the hybrid and the remote learning. Have they lost students? That seems like a high number to lose, but I just thought that would be helpful.
We can get the population enrollment from last year to do a kind of a general ballpark. We haven't done the October 1st count yet, so these are all kind of fluid numbers, but certainly give you the enrollment for school next, last year. I don't think, I think we can produce that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odin. Anything else before we move on? Ms. Brown?
Sorry. Actually, my question's kind of related to that spreadsheet, too. Is this, is this pulled monthly, this school by choice, or is this like for this school year?
It's not monthly. It was just something. It was just something that, it was, it was calculated right after the registration or what we call survey was generated. So typically, what happens every year is that we get what's called the October 1st count. It's a very important number because it represents basically our funding, basically our enrollment for the year, and our enrollment has always been pretty fluid. It's been since I've been here between 11,000 to about 11,200 to about 11,000. So the numbers you're seeing here is our, a snapshot of our, our numbers of students we have enrolled in each of our schools. I say numbers. To Ms. Raymond's point earlier, we have 5 people showing up, enrolling their kids in our schools today. We also have 1 people, 1 person leaving, so that number is fairly fluid all the way up until-ish October, mid-October. So that's a kind of a, it's a long-winded answer to your question, Ms. Brown, but the answer to your question is it's just a snapshot of the students who were enrolled in the schools at the time of the survey. Doesn't, that number could change. Oh, you're on mute. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, I thought you were asking another question.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mosley. All right, so moving on. This is like the fastest I've moved through one before. Very exciting. I knock on some wood here. Number 6 is proposed dates for the New Hampshire School Board Association's meetings. The Board had decided earlier this summer that it would be helpful for us to take advantage of some of the free trainings offered by the School Boards Association. And Ms. Cincella included in our packet a number of dates, you know, proposed dates for these trainings. I thought it would be nice to pick a couple of days, maybe 3 days each month, where we had a majority of members available, and that way, we could get back to the School Board Association and get those scheduled. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Somehow, I don't have the dates.
They're in the packet that Gabby sent out on Friday. And if you continue to scroll past all of the charts, it's the next, there's 3 sets of calendars, 4 calendars. Unfortunately, I didn't print them. I'm trying to go paperless. It's really hard. Dr. Mosley?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can, Tara, are you going to share your screen, or I can do it?
Okay.
Tara, I can't see you.
She's nodding.
All right, I'm going to try to do this. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't see everyone.
Oh, that's so challenging. Okay, so right now, you're on October, so I think the first calendar was September. And it's basically the 21st and then the 27th through the 30th would be proposed dates for this. Unfortunately, now that we're on shared screen, I can't see anybody. So here's what I'll do. We'll just do a quick. I had hoped to be able to pick the dates tonight. Suppose if everybody's attention has been brought to them, you can indicate in the comments or email Ms. Cincella your availability, but I hate to let it go on without getting back to the School Board Association.
Is it all day of training or just the time?
I think 2 hours was the maximum amount of time.
And actually, my question was the same as yours, Gloria. Is it an evening, or is it daytime slot, or just sometime in that zone on those dates?
Evening.
I can make any of the dates in September, but on October 2nd, I'm having foot surgery, and I will be confined to the house using a wheelie cart for at least a month. So if there's a way I can zoom into the meetings or participate by phone, I will be happy to. But other, other than the fact that I can't go anywhere in October, I'm available for all the dates.
Really want to pick you up so that I can see you do your wheelie cart down the aisle.
The last time I used it, I fell over and broke my nose, so so hopefully, this time, it'll go much better. I think I'm a better driver than I was then.
Okay, I don't want to see that.
You'll be wheelie cool this time, Sharon.
Ah, Jen.
Do you know if this is during the day or in the evening?
Evening. These are nighttime. The ETV person, Jimmy, is saying that he can't display the graphic unless it's full, unless the calendar is in the full-screen mode. I don't know how to do that.
I'm just, is that how?
Yeah, sure. Okay. I guess perhaps it would be easier if we said who's unavailable. So Ms. Brown is unavailable on the 30th. Does anybody else have any unavailability in the red dates there in September?
On the 29th, I don't know if I'm going to be free in the evening. I'm not too sure.
All right, so it sounds like in September, the 21st, the 27th, and the 28th are the best dates. Anyone else have any unavailability? Okay, let's look at October. Dr. Mosley, can you scroll to October, please? Okay, so we're showing October. Does anyone have any dates that they're not available in October? Of the red, you know, the 5th, 7th, 19th, 26th, or 28th? I hear nothing, and I can't see everybody. So it sounds to me, since I'm not hearing anything, that everybody's okay potentially for October.
Oh, Jen.
Oh, sorry.
Please shut up, because I can't see people.
I would prefer, I could make it work, but I prefer not the last week, that 26th through 28th. If we could do one of the earlier days, for me, it would be a little better, but we can, but I can make it work if everybody else works for it.
Okay. Anyone else? So we'll say October would be the 5th, the 7th, or the 19th, and then November? Oh, it looks like we just have 2 days potential in November.
It's a possibility. We could add others. I didn't want to clog, clog the week with 3 to 4, obviously, for everybody's, you know, personal life.
Right before the holidays, too. It's very challenging to have that many meetings in a week. Okay. I have no personal life. I'm available for all of these days. And then, we didn't choose any for December. Ms. Cincella, does that help you?
That helps me.
Okay.
I knew that when we met with the New Hampshire School Board Association, they had mentioned trying to get these done prior to the November holiday, so that's what I focused on. If we have to go a little past, we will, but that also gets to be a difficult time of year for folks, so.
Okay. All right, so we won't need all of these dates. We agreed to 3 trainings. I don't know if they have to split any into 2 nights since we're trying to keep it to 2 hours or so, so that we, our brains work the whole time. But Ms. Cincella will talk to the School Boards Association, and then she'll get back to us with the dates of the trainings. So, and that will be good. Okay. The last public thing that I have on tonight's agenda, and then I have 2 non-public items that have come up in the last 24 hours, is the question of in-person versus remote meetings for us. I spoke with ETV, and they need about 3 weeks lead time in order to move the equipment back into North for us to have meetings. But they can't move it back and forth all the time, so if we choose to stay remote, everything is remote. If we choose to do in-person meetings, then all of our meetings would be in-person. I would be more comfortable if we had a 6-3 majority or 7-2 majority willing to be in-person, if that's the way that we're going. That way, if someone is ill or has a conflict on a particular meeting night, we don't run into a problem of not having a quorum, because if we did not, if we don't have a quorum once we go back to in-person, we can't just pivot to Zoom. We'd have to cancel the meeting. So, Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Brown?
I feel pretty strongly that once we are expecting students and staff to be in the school buildings, that we should be meeting publicly, and so as it looks right now, we're aiming for October 5th for the elementary schools to begin, and that if we gave notice tonight to ETV, that would give them 3 and 1/2 weeks' notice to move the equipment back. I'm more than happy to attend as long as I can get to the meetings.
Okay. So, Ms. Brown?
Actually, my question was, do we think that we're going to go back to our typical meeting schedule with not having the special meetings? Are we going to be going to more a policy meeting each week with 2 regular meetings per month? Are we going to try to go back to that?
So the last time the Board voted on our meeting schedule, a non-pandemic meeting schedule, was to have 1 committee meeting a month for each committee and 1 main Board of Ed meeting. So if we would need to, if we would want to have 2 regular Board of Ed instead of having to squish special meetings in, the Board would have to vote on that. And then Ms. Cincella would have to figure out where to fit it in the calendar. We typically only have 1 in November and December because of the holidays anyways. I see Ms. Bishop and Ms. Johnson. I'm sorry, I think Ms. Johnson had her hand up before, and I missed her. So if you don't mind, Ms. Bishop.
That's all right. Ms. Bishop can go ahead of me. That's fine.
I was just going to say, I think because we have been having long meetings and a lot of meetings, it might be helpful for us to go back to the 2 meetings a month for the Board of Ed, do those Zoom, and do the committee meetings, test it out, test the waters with doing those in-person. Because I don't think we're going to get the 7-2, because I think we don't have a couple of people who aren't going to be able to come in meeting, but I think when we do the committees, it might be a little easier to navigate, but I do think we need to go back to the 2 meetings a month because we're already having 4. So let's just plan on it.
Yeah, it's been a lot. Unfortunately, ETV has to move equipment literally from the, the North Studio to their other studio in order to run the Zoom meetings for us, so we have to choose all. It's like all or nothing with the Zoom. So once they move the equipment out of their studio and into the North Studio, then they would need again, they need like 3 weeks to break it down and then reset it up. So they can't go back and forth between Zoom for a committee and live in-person for regular, or vice versa, I think is what you said.
Is there a way to do our meetings in that area up at North? I mean, it's committee. It's 4 people.
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't, wait, what?
No, I guess when we have the full board. No, I'm not, oh, never mind. So you're saying everything has to be either Zoom meetings, or everything has to be in-person, that we can't toggle between the 2?
Yes.
I do feel strongly that I think we need, we're having the kids come back. I think we should start coming back, too, and doing public comment, so I'm a little torn on this. So, always to see what everyone else has to say.
And I do think that's 2 different questions, by the way. We're talking about having meetings in-person versus meetings in Zoom, and then the second question that Ms. Brown raised was 2 meetings a month or 1 meeting a month? So I wouldn't tie the motions together, or I would prefer people didn't tie motions together. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Well, I've been a proponent for a long time for us to get back in, for the public to be able to talk to us, and I think it's the right time, you know? If everybody's going, if we're starting some of the students back on October 5th, then we need to, it's almost like us going back to school now again, too. And I also feel that, I know you don't want to tie it together, but this way, I don't have to give another little speech here. I think breaking it down to 2 meetings a month versus these long meetings and all these special meetings, I mean, because by the time we're done, we're having more meetings than if we had the 2 meetings a month, because things crop up. If we know what we need to put on the calendars coming out of the committees, and if we don't need the meeting, and we can cancel it long in advance so the public can be aware of it. But I think it would do us all some good to get back into a routine, just like our students are trying to get into a routine, and being on the Board and getting focused again, and hopefully, this pandemic, you know, won't be as bad as it has been, and let's be positive about everything, getting back in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Brown had a question about the capacity for phone dial-in lines to North, and we have 1 built into the wall, and we can put up to 3 phones in there. So we would have to, we would, literally, you take the speaker, you take the microphone and hold it over the speaker for the phone, so you put someone on speakerphone. The quality of the audio is challenging for being in the room. And also, I would say, we have to have, we're a committee of 9, so we have to have at least 5 people present in order for a meeting to go forward. So if we had 5 people physically present and 4 people on the phone, it would work, but if 1 person gets ill or has, you know, their car breakdown or something happens and can't make it or is late, we have to cancel the meeting. Mr. Norris?
Thank you. So in regards to any like regulations on mask wearing and distance, are we just going to go basically follow the normal school regulations for distance mask wearing, and then develop something separate for public comment, or?
Yes, so I've been talking to everybody about this. So there's a few things that we can do. We have the big horseshoe. Excuse me. Everyone will be required to wear masks. It's a public building. You have to wear a mask while you're in it, unless you're more than 6 feet apart, but my quest would be that we all wear masks. The horseshoe is big enough, I think, to seat the Board members, every other seat, but I think administrators might have to get bumped to the first row. And then we would need to cordon off chairs in the audience section in order to ensure that people are maintaining social distancing in the audience. We may have to talk to plant ops about making some sort of indicator for 6 feet apart if people have to line up in order to come speak if we have too many people for the number of chairs available. Ms. Cincella found some microphone covers. Ms. Kinsella found some microphone covers that can be put over the microphones and can be disposable. I've seen some that you can put over the microphones, and then they're capable of being sprayed with Lysol. Because you cannot spray the microphones with Lysol, you'll break them. So there are a number of options that are entirely possible to make this safe for everyone. So I see Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Bishop?
Thank you. Well, I think that sounds fantastic. So I move that we return to the boardroom for our regular board meetings starting the week of October 5th.
I'll second.
Second. I was on mute. Okay, so I heard Ms. Johnson first. So the motion is to return to the boardroom for regular meetings October, the week of October 5th, correct? Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to comment or discuss that before we take the vote? Ms. Bishop?
I just want to point out that when we're, when, the difference between public commenting and going back to school is kids have to be in school where people can voluntarily come to public comment. So we're not forcing anybody into an uncomfortable situation when they come to talk to us, whereas we are with children. So I just wanted to make that clear, that I, I'm in support of returning to public comment because we're not forcing anybody to come, and they have to be willing to follow the rules.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Anybody else? Ms. Brown?
All right, this is actually not related, but maybe something we can consider for committee. Well, it is related. A temporarily, a temporary policy, modifying our rules to allow four people, more, more than five people to not be physically present. I don't know if that's something we need to think about, but we could, it would be good to put it in, as an emergency policy.
I think that might be a question for legal.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, a quorum of the body has to be a majority. So I definitely think that that's something we should email our committee about.
That may fall under either state law or some sort of jurisdiction. I can look that up, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. I'm sorry, my dogs are barking at, it could be anything. It could be a leaf, it could be someone walking. That's how life goes. So, Ms. Timmons? Oh, Ms. Timmons, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Just to be transparent, I will not go back into a boardroom at this time. I have to wait until we come up with a vaccination.
And that's valid. I think we have members who aren't ready to go back, who aren't physically able to go back. And that is okay. And that's why we have to vote on it. I don't want to force anybody into a situation where they need to go into a place that would be dangerous for them. That's, you know, I don't want anybody to do that. So a vote, even if a majority votes to return in-person, as long as we have a majority actually willing to be physically present, we can have, as Ms. Brown pointed out earlier, up to four people on the phone. So, Ms. Timmons, if the vote goes to return to person, we would have you call in, which I think you've done before, but we can certainly get the direction back again. Okay? Any, everything is fine, that's just dogs. Ms. Bishop?
Sorry. We do have administration that comes to these meetings. Just, are you guys comfortable also? We don't need a quorum of you there, but we do like you there and enjoy your input.
Thank you for the question. I would say that, for the most part, our team that typically shows up is our, like Garth, this case Anthony, the assistant superintendents. We have a lot more flexibility and greater participation. It's easier to do this on their remote learning, I mean, on, through Zoom. The other piece to this, too, is that I'm not sure that if there's an agenda item that comes up, that the administrator or the teacher will show up for the in-person. They might have to do it remotely.
Are we able to accommodate that, Heather?
No, we can't. We don't have the capacity to, like, set up a computer running Zoom with, with somebody else and get that on television the way that everything else is televised. I don't think, I can double-check with ETV, but.
Well, just to, just to throw it out. So my, and just an idea, my grad school was between Dartmouth College, UNH, and UMaine. And we would have a whole, like, the whole drop-down screen that's in the horseshoe. We would have the two other colleges who were working in tandem with us projected over that screen. So you would get the audio from the computer, but you would get the faces there. So it would be just like people calling in. And we very rarely had any glitches. But it was also, I mean, college is where you're spending thousands and thousands of dollars to be at. But that was a possibility. I don't know if ETV can look into it, but I mean, that was a hot possibility, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know. It's possible. I think we'd have to have the district provide a laptop and a Zoom should an administrator be unable to come to one of our meetings. You know, additionally, typically, if a teacher, for example, wouldn't be able to come, the principal could come and speak to it or one of the assistant superintendents or even the superintendent. So we don't necessarily need to always have the exact individual.
And if people are doing presentations, I mean, we're getting good with this remote learning. If they're doing a presentation, they can tape it beforehand, and we can play it over the same projector.
Yep.
A little bit of knowledge for me is dangerous, so I could be completely talking out of not my mouth right now.
Right. So.
Double-check. So I'm great.
We can research some of these options. I'll be glad to talk to Pete and his crew tomorrow. I will just warn you, and I think that some of the board members that have been on the board for a number of years know that anytime you have somebody via phone as opposed to live in-person, it slows the process down, probably even more than we consider Zoom slowing us down. So if you had four members on the phone, Heather has no access to, or the board president, sorry, no access to be able to see them visually or even get a cue from them. So they're kind of, kind of jumping out and trying to get, you know, let themselves be known. And it, and it is time-consuming. It's still roll-call vote. So it's not going to speed up the process any.
Yes, we went two years with somebody on the phone who wasn't able to physically come to the meetings. And his, his contributions were always valuable, but I don't know how he followed along. I don't. Mr. Moser is incredibly intelligent, and I, I don't know that I could do that. Go ahead, Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown is waving at me and giving me the okay sign, and she doesn't actually want to speak right now. Okay. So are we ready for the roll-call? Okay. I'm going to use the same order that I used earlier because that's how I wrote it down. And I'm going to call myself first. I vote yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Timmons?
No.
Okay. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I went out of order, sorry. Still have, yes. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay. I have 6 to 1. Hopefully, I counted that correctly. So the motion to return to in-person starting the week of October 5th passes. Now, just before we got into this, Ms. Brown had brought up meetings twice a month instead of once a month. Is that something that you want to do at this time? Or wait until another meeting? Dan, we're getting you, turning yourself around.
Sorry, somebody was potential spam. So, like, who's calling me?
So, Ms. Brown?
My question was more, if we can, since, I like to think that if we start meeting in-person, we'll be a little bit more efficient about getting through things. And maybe as school's moving along, we won't need the special board meetings so frequently. So, I mean, I realize emergencies will come up, but, you know, I'm hoping just we can get back on to more of a typical, our typical work schedule to accommodate people's work schedules.
Okay, thank you. So, no motion at this time. Anything else?
Wait, no, did you want a motion for the two meetings a month?
I, I have no preference one way or the other, but if that's something that someone wanted to make a motion for, I'm ready to hear it now before we do non-public.
Yeah, no, I moved to go to two meetings a month for Board of Ed.
So moved. I'll second.
So the motion is to have two meetings a month? Two regular board meetings a month?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, it's very loud at my house right now, and I don't know why. So, any discussion on this? Ms. Brown?
I, question would actually be kind of directed towards Ms. Kinsella, since she's the keeper of the sched calendars. Is, do you think that seems manageable with the workload moving forward and our, and our committee meeting schedule?
So during my 25 years with the district, our method was always to have two meetings per month. And they were kind of strategically placed on Monday nights. I believe it was the second Monday of the month and the last Monday of the month. And it was done, the rest of the committee meetings were scheduled so that one meeting lent itself more to the business of the committees, and the other meeting lent itself more to openness of discussion for various things that come up in the district. I thought it was efficient. Everybody knew. It wasn't a hard schedule to keep. And it worked very well. Dan can probably speak to it as well.
Yeah, I, I agree that two a month, and the committee stuff was handled mostly at one meeting. Larger or slash other topics were handled at the other meeting.
If I could just add too, there's more meetings coming to the board as well. Meaning more meetings. We're going to start contract negotiations. And there are various bargaining units, teachers, directors, custodians, and, and so there's other meetings that are going to be scheduled during the, during the week in addition to the committee meetings, in addition to the board meetings, as we start to engage in negotiations with the bargaining units.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, that's an important point. I think there are four or five contracts that are coming up.
Four.
For, at the end of this school year. Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to say, when I was on the board, too, we always had it, you know, two board meetings a month. We knew our schedule, and they always went smoothly because of the fact that you knew what you were doing at the beginning, you knew what you were doing at the end. And we didn't have four, five-hour meetings. And I think the goal is, yeah. I know this was kind of strenuous, you know, during these times. But I think the goal is, if we could have the two meetings and have the priority, you know, no, hopefully, no more than two hours, and we can get through everything because we've broken it up and we have a system once again, I think that would be the best way. Believe me, I don't want to give up any more nights than I have to either, because I like being over the house with my grandbabies, you know? But, you know, this is, this is what we elected to do, and let's try to streamline it again. But we're not bogged down four, five hours at these meetings because after two hours with me, I'm lost, I'm gone. And I think everybody's brain is gone. So I think for a while, if we need to, let's try the two meetings again. And hopefully, we can get caught up, and maybe we won't have to do two meetings as we start getting into negotiations. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Bishop, what point are you wanting to start the two meetings a month? September, October?
It looks like our September calendar's pretty, our dance card is pretty full. So how about October?
Okay. Okay.
And then I'm wondering, just as an aside, when, I know there are some people who work on days off, but if people are worried about the evening, no, never mind, that's just complicating things. I was just wondering if we don't have school one day, if we could have meetings during the day at the schools and then not eat into the evenings as much?
Oh.
It's an interesting idea.
I'm full of them.
And I don't know how it would go with the remote learning, but I certainly think it's something to look into.
Right, so like, no, nobody's in school on Fridays. Well, the teachers are in school, but we may be able to kind of stack meetings. I mean, it would, I would have to accommodate my workday, but, well, there is my workday. Don't, don't tell my bosses I'm talking about this.
And Mr. Guarino, too, and Ms. Johnson, all have daytime commitments that I'm aware of. So, and Ms. Timmons? Ms. Timmons, did you have a comment? You're on mute.
Daytime will not work for me. I'm extremely busy with other organizations and things that I do. And I'm on Zoom most of the days. So that wouldn't work for me.
Okay, so I'll have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Okay, so, any other comments regarding the motion to go back to two meetings a month? I don't see anybody.
I do have one other, with, I kind of agree with, not kind, I do agree with Paula Johnson when she said that we could streamline those meetings and do exactly what Terry has suggested, that we have one meeting for business and the other meeting for getting things out and discussions. That would be a lot better than having four-hour or five-hour Zoom meetings. I can go along with the two meetings a month, if that's the case.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. And before I take the roll, a belated welcome to Mr. Gao, who joined us several minutes ago. Welcome, Mr. Gao.
Glad for joining late, too. I just, golf trials were today, so we just got back.
How did you do?
All right, how, how did you do?
Not as good yesterday, but it'll be fine.
It was a hot day to be out there.
Yeah, it was fun. Yeah, honestly, any day of golf, no matter how I shoot, it's just like, it's better than being inside in front of the computers. So I'll take it.
Good.
That's right, Josh.
Not that, not that I don't like being, by the way, I love this.
It's okay to love golf more than the Board of Ed. That's.
It is.
Okay. So on the motion to return, oh. I'm sorry, did someone speak up? No, okay, I don't know what that was then. On the motion to return to two meetings per month.
Starting October.
Starting in October. Heather votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Does anybody else have anything else before we go into non-public? Okay. Dr. Mosley, I know we have two non-public things. non-public things regarding personnel and regarding negotiations. I know we have at least one where we have to make a motion. Do you, do we want to have ETV wait? Or do we think that this discussion will take a while and we should let Jimmy go home?
I don't anticipate, one has already been discussed. The other one will just, both items have actually already been discussed. I mean, this isn't the first time the board is seeing it. So I don't think it's going to be too, I'm hoping that it's not too long, you know what I mean? I think we've talked about both items extensively already. It's just a question of finishing stuff up, so I don't anticipate a long one. And we can, so.
Okay, so, so for ETV, Mr. McLean, if you don't mind hanging out, we'll have our discussions. I expect it to take probably fifteen to twenty to, hopefully not more than thirty minutes, but we're chatty. And then we'll come back. Mr. Gao and Mr. Norris, you're welcome to stay or go. I don't know how much interest you'll have in either of these things. Ms. Johnson? Oh, you're on mute, Ms. Johnson.
I'm sorry, if I could have Ms. Kinsella send me a link to my phone because I'm getting bitten up by the mosquitoes now outside. So I gotta swap to a phone right now.
Why don't we take the vote to go into non-public? And that will give you a chance, after we take that vote, to have a couple seconds to switch devices.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A32. E. So moved. Okay, who was first, Ms. Brown?
Ms. Odin was.
Ms. Odin, okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Okay. So we are in non-public as of 7:25 PM. So we are back in public at 7:58 PM. I am looking for a motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Okay. By, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Yeah, I can't do this, I don't know how Ray does it. I needed to make a chart before we started and I didn't. I vote yes on sealing the minutes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? I keep forgetting she's gone. Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Okay. That's one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and no-nos. So the minutes are sealed. Okay, so at this time, I am looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the National Teachers Union, units A, B, C, and D, that were dating today, September 9, 2020.
So moved.
Ms. Gilio? And I was looking down, was that you, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Timmons. Okay. I vote yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
All right, and Ms. Odin?
I abstain to avoid a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we have two, three, five yeses and one abstention. So the motion to approve the MOU with the Teachers Union and all four bargaining, well, four bargaining units passes. That is all I had for this evening. Anybody else? Ms. Gilio was like, knock on wood, don't say it out loud.
Did we have one personnel item that we were just going to say we approved and I thought that was something we had to do in public session?
I think because we, I think we decided, oh, Dr. Mosley's frozen. I think the thing that we had decided upon the last bit of advice from Attorney Bolton was that we could make the motion on a personnel contract in non-public without having.
Okay, okay.
So, oh, Dr. Mosley's back. I can't hear you, Dr. Mosley.
I think it needs to, it doesn't need to happen in public.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I don't have anything else. Anybody else? Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gilio. All right, I vote yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons, I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons.
That's okay, doesn't matter, yeah.
Right. Wait, now I'm out of order. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
And Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn passes five to zero. Thank you, everybody. Oh, I did forget one thing. There was a mobile food pantry on Friday at one of the high schools. Dr. Mosley, do you know which high school it is? Ms. Dagel sent out an email earlier.
I can, not at the top of my head, I'm so sorry.
So, I really wanted to mention it.
It is Nashville High South.
It is. Oh, thank you so much, you're so much faster than me. So there's a mobile food pantry at Nashville High South at 1:00 PM, that's 36 Riverside Drive. And that's for anybody, there's no qualifications, no one's going to be like checking any credentials. So anybody who's interested, please feel free, starting at 1:00, to do the mobile food pantry drive-through at Nashville South. Okay. I appreciate everyone letting me get that out. All right, thank you all, have a good rest of the week.